Would all please stand to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July meeting of the Rondicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative details that I need to take care of. First, in the event of a fire, the fire exit is located to your left. Please use, you'll be notified by an announcement if there is a fire. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Meetings, our meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, who is recording them for the purposes of preparing minutes. So each time you come to the podium, please identify yourself by name and address and speak into the microphone so that she can reflect who's saying what in the minutes. They are designed as minutes of the meeting, not a transcript. So they will not be word for word, but we need you to cooperate with that. We follow the items in the order that they appear on our agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available on the table by the door. Procedure that we follow is that the applicant comes forward or their representative identifies themselves by their name and address. Then they pause, they raise their right hand, they're sworn to tell the truth, and then they proceed with the presentation of their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, questions and comments may be made by the board and the members of the board. That is not a time for questions from the audience. Once the applicant has completed their presentation, then we open it up to the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have, there have been three categories identified so far. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then we ask those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And then the third category is those who are neither in favor nor opposed to the application, but want to talk to us about some aspect of the application that they want to comment on. During the time that the public input portion, only the person from the, who's speaking is the only one who should be speaking. There should be no comments between the audience and any of the speakers. The board, of course, always has the right to interrupt anyone with questions or a comment pertaining to whatever's being said. Once we conclude the portion of the public hearing with those three categories, we then give the applicant or their representative an opportunity to come back up and address anything that came out or was raised as an issue during the public hearing portion of the meeting. When we conclude that, then we are finished with that case and we'll move on to the next case on the agenda. Once we have completed all of the cases that appear on the agenda, the board will take a short break. And when we come back from the break, we will deliberate on each of the cases that we've heard, starting with the first case that appears on the agenda and for which the applicant is still present. So if the applicant with the first case on the agenda has left, we'll start with the second case, assuming that applicant is present. And then we will go down on the order of the agenda and applicants present, complete all of those cases, then go back to the top and deliberate in the same order on the cases for which the applicants or their representatives are no longer present. During that portion of the meeting, there is no opportunity for public input unless it's requested by the board. You do not have to stay to, for the deliberative portion of the meeting. If you're interested in learning what the decision is, you can either catch us on TV or you can, I think we're now on channel thirteen, thirteen oh one or thirteen oh three, something like that.
I think it's oh three.
Thirteen oh three, I think. Or you can call the town building and zoning department in the morning after nine o'clock and they'll be glad to tell you what we decide. And so normally that's where I end my administrative things. Tonight, though, there are two other things that I need to address before we get underway. First, I'd like to welcome Brad Upson back. He has recovered from his health issues and it's nice to have you back.
Thank you, it's nice to be back.
Second is that 242 years ago, on today's date, the Second Continental Congress passed Richard Henry Lee's resolution that these colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states. And that is the birthday of the United States of America, July 2nd, 1776, which John Adams wrote to Abigail on the 3rd would be a day that would be celebrated for decades to come with parades, fireworks, religious observances, picnics, and gatherings of every nature. On the 4th, they agreed on the wording of the declaration, which wasn't signed until August 2nd. But we celebrate the 4th because it says "in Congress, July 4th, 1776." That's the declaration, not the actual birthday. So happy birthday to all of us American citizens today. We're going to delay the celebration until Wednesday. Now we can get underway with the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1807-1. Upon the matter of request by Cheryl Gergensky, acting as agent for Amos Aracy for area variances to maintain street-side fencing on a corner lot with lesser required setback and front yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height and non-conforming fence type on premises 2036 North Goodman Street in an R2 residential district.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Gergensky and I reside at 2036 North Goodman Street, Rochester, New York, 14609.
Raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Do I read this now, what I want to say?
You can present your case any way you'd like to.
I'm requesting a variance for 2036 North Goodman Street. It's a corner lot located at the corner of Dick Street and North Goodman Street. I replaced the fence that was originally there with a six-foot fence in the back of the property and a four-foot fence in the front. The other fence was falling down, had vines growing through it, holes in it, and it was approximately only two and a half feet high and the kids were jumping over it. I installed the four-foot fence in front in exactly the same line as where the prior fence was. The only difference is the prior fence went across the whole front of the property to the driveway and I only ran it 12 feet across just to cover the bus stop that's located in the front of my property. Yesterday, I had a woman waiting for the bus underneath the tree in my yard. I have kids coming off the bus and leaving their bus passes and, I mean, twice a day I'm out there cleaning up the yard. My father and my grandmother both wanted it all the way across as they reside in the, in the house too, but I felt it didn't look appealing. So to appease them, I just put it in front of the bus stop. My contractor told me I didn't need a permit. And all the estimates that I got from three different people all had, all said you can have four feet in the front and six feet in the back. So when the town told me it can only be three and a half feet, after the contractor stopped answering my calls because I was mad at him, I called Home Depot who told me they don't make three and a half feet. If I have to move it, because it's two feet from the sidewalk, so if I have to move it three feet in, I have to take down two trees in the backyard. I also have a rescue dog that's a neo mastiff. He's 17 months old and he's already 120 pounds and when he stands, he's taller than me. So I, my grandmother wanted a new fence and kept complaining, so I gave it to her as a Mother Day birthday and now it's just a nightmare. I've had a bike stolen from my garage in five minutes. Like we hit the garage door open to take the lawnmower in the backyard, they were already in the garage and the bike's gone. I've also had an air conditioner stolen this year out of my garage. I think a fence would, the fence would slow them down from exiting the property and not jumping over it. I spent $5,400 total on this fence and now you're asking me to remove it. The fence was in total disrepair. I do have a copy of the old fence. It was rotted with holes in it, it had vines growing through it. I cleaned all that up. I also have a letter from my neighbor next door saying she thinks it looks really nice and kind of official to the neighborhood. I called Home Depot as they referred me to this contractor and they said they're not responsible for the contractor's actions because he is the one who clearly told me that I did not need a permit if I replaced it exact location and the exact material. So that's why I bought Chain Link. I would have loved a decorative fence in the front, but he said I couldn't. So that's my argument.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, who was the, who was the contractor?
Um, I have a copy of his bill. He's just an older gentleman.
Was it somebody that was referred to you by Home Depot?
Yeah, I called up asking if they installed fences. They said no, but we'll give you three contractors that do. And he, yeah.
Did you buy your fence from them?
Yes.
I think we've run into this before where Home Depot has installed the fence. It was either Home Depot or Lowe's.
Yeah, Home Depot doesn't install fences.
Right, they subcontracted out.
Right.
And they, it was a gentleman that lived, I believe, on Wimbledon Road and they installed a six-foot high fence out in front on his driveway, kind of right at the front corner of his house. And again, I'm not sure if it was Lowe's or Home Depot. They sell the fence and, they sell the fence and then they get a subcontractor to put it in. And he had to have, we made him take it down and he went to them and they were going to pay for the redoing of it or.
I told them that I had to spend the money to redo it and they, they didn't want to know nothing when I called.
I think if you, you know, in the event something changes here, and I'm not saying that's going to be the case, but in the event something changes here, I would suggest you.
Talk to a more higher up?
Definitely, especially if they're the ones that gave you the referral of the, of the contractor.
That's what I told them and he said we're not responsible.
We've had this discussion with our staff in reference to contractors that do things all around town, build sheds where they're not supposed to, decks where they're not supposed to, garages where they're not supposed to. And then the contractor's favorite line is, oh, you know, you don't need a permit, we just do it and they're gone and it's done and now it's the homeowner's responsibility. Personally, I believe that the contractor should be fined, but that's something that our town board has to take up and make it a law. So and let them know that they can't keep doing this.
But four different contractors told me I could have four feet in front.
Again, they're not, they're, they don't care. It's because they can do it in a day, they finish it and they get it out and they're done and they get their money from you and off they go.
But even a fence company, because I did get an estimate from a fence company.
Fence companies, you know, they do the same thing. Technically, what their, their argument's going to be is it's the responsibility of the homeowner to go ahead and get a permit. But they should have told you that, he should have told you that. Go down to the town, get the permit, once you get the permit, then I'll install the fence. That's what they, that's what should be happening. And he shouldn't start digging a hole to put a fence in or anything, any other project until there's a permit in your front window.
All right.
You know, post it.
He explained, oh, if you're staying on the same line and the same material, you don't need one.
Again, because you bought the fencing from Home Depot, you know, I think you'd have a good argument with them. But again, I'm not saying that we're going to turn anything down at this point. We want to hear about it and see it.
The letter that she made reference to was signed by Mrs. Nikosia, who resides at 2048 North Goodman Street, who thinks the fence looks fabulous and makes the neighborhood appearance look better and thinks that the fence should stay. Also, with respect to what he was saying, the, if you look on your work order from fence companies and stuff, there's probably a line that says government compliance is the homeowner's responsibility. That's how they usually get around that.
Well, this gentleman doesn't have that on here.
Can you pass that around, let us see it?
Oh, yeah. This is only the partial, because what happened is Home Depot delivered me a little more fence. I wasn't going to do the backyard. So because I had extra, he convinced me. So that's, that, let me see, then I have all these too. I gave him cash, of course, but this I put on my charge card.
I have a question for you right here. Is the back part of the fence runs across the backyard? Is that in violation, is it too close to the lot line?
Yes, they wanted three feet over. I put it on the exact same location. They said that, my grandma's owned the house for 49 years and I guess it wasn't legal when she bought it, which they told me after. So they let it go because it was before 1960-something. But now that I, I could have replaced a portion of it, but now that I replaced the whole thing, now I'm in violation. But I have two trees there that I will have to take down to get it a foot over.
That was my, that was my question because.
It's only two feet.
It's not a huge piece of property we're talking about here.
No.
And those two trees, I think, are valuable to it, for shade and whatever else. So it'd be a shame to have to take those trees down.
I know.
Move the fence, what, about two feet, whatever?
One more foot.
One more foot.
It's already two feet, one more, yeah, I know. I agree with you. Your home sounds right.
No.
Does anyone wish to, or first off, does anyone, members of the board have any more questions or comments?
Just wanted, Amos Aracy, that's your grandmother, she's the owner. She's okay with everything and?
She wanted to come, but she fell. So she's in a nursing home, just getting rehab. She'll be home on Monday, but she was trying to get me to pick her up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She has her mind as her body's not working.
All right, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, trees, anything like that? All right, see?
Before you close it, I have a question. The side of the house which faces Dick Street, right along, right along the very side of the house, are surveying, and I didn't go out to the house, so I apologize. But is it a four-foot fence right now next to the house or is that six-foot?
In the front, it's four, behind the house is six.
Right, but right along the side of the house of those?
So it's four to the back.
Four to the back corner of the house?
And then, then it goes up to six, yeah.
All right, then we'll close the hearing with respect to this case and move on to the next application.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1807-2. Upon the matter of request by Helene Amos Araffine for a special use permit to harbor one goat pursuant to Section 235-70 of Town Code on premises 108 Chadwell Road in an R1 residential district.
How you doing? I'm Mr. Sarafine, I reside at 108 Chadwell Road.
Raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Sarafine, I'm sorry, what's your first name?
Uh, Nathan, N-A-T-H-A-N.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before we get underway with this, I do this for every time we have a special use permit in front of us. A special use permit is different from an area variance or a use variance. Area and use variances are exceptions to the zoning ordinance that we're asked to approve. A special use permit is for a use that the town board has already determined is appropriate in the town.
Okay.
So the issue for us is not whether or not goats are a good idea. The question for us is, under what conditions, what conditions are appropriate to have a goat? Because the town board has determined goats, chickens, ducks, hens, and a variety of other animals are all okay as long as we fashion conditions to make them as compatible as possible with the neighborhood. So I, I say that for everyone who's in the audience and who's watching so that you understand that it's not, I mean, you can talk to us about why goats are a good idea or a bad idea, but that's not the question in front of us. Okay?
Okay, uh, I, I'm a contractor in Rochester here. I've been in business since 2006. Some of my recent work is City Grill, City Tavern, Tony D's, Hooligans. I mean, I do a lot of commercial stuff. I'm building a house up in Jefferson County for myself. So I'm here Sunday evening through Wednesday night or Thursday morning. It's different every week. I have a small goat farm up there. Each year I get, in addition to my farm, a small goat. And it's usually from May till August, that 90-day period. Out of that 90-day period, I'm only in Rochester, well, the goat would only be here and has been here Sunday evening, eight o'clock, until Wednesday evening. So out of a 30-day span, maybe, maybe 15 days tops. So out of 90 days, you're looking at 45 days total. Reasoning for keeping the goat is because I bottle-feed it. So it needs to be able to sustain itself. Once it gets to 16 weeks old, then it goes in with a herd, doesn't need milk, and it could, you know, eat food and not have to be helped out. You know, I guess, you know, I don't see what the big deal is. A dog or a goat doesn't bite like a dog, doesn't bark like a dog. You know, it's, it's on a leash, it's always, somebody's always with it. When it's not, you know, out in the backyard with either myself or my mother while I'm at work, it's in a kennel. You know, I have numerous neighbors who are in favor because it's educational. Their kids come over, pet it, feed it, play with it. We had one complaint and I don't know why they complained because they have a big garage, you know, two-story garage and then they have a six-foot fence, so they can't even see anything. I think it was just a matter of them, you know, kind of having too much time on their hands. So I guess, you know, I, I'd like to have the goat, you know, in the future. I mean, if this means I have to put up a fence on part of the yard, he'd be happy to. I mean, two sides of the yard is already fenced in. If I have to add two more sections of fence to batch the other stuff, I'll do it. What, you know, no big deal. But I do live in Rochester part-time because I run a business here. It's how I make my living. So it's, you know, I would appreciate, you know, you guys to work with me on this, you know, so.
Where is the food for the goat stored?
In a, in a, well, it's a baby goat, it's a small goat. So any, any grain that we have is stored inside the house in a Tupperware container. And I have, I mean, one bale of hay stored inside of the garage. And then we get fresh produce, carrots, apples, stuff like that. I mean, Donna Martello told me to get signatures from all the neighbors that were in favor and their address. I did get that, if you guys want to see a copy of it or something.
Well, I have that in front of me.
Have that, okay.
Since you brought it up, I'll read that into the record now.
Yeah.
It says, "I am aware of a baby goat that is temporarily staying on the property of 108 Chadwell Road, Rochester. I am aware that the goat is being bottle-fed and is only on the property from Monday to Wednesday for approximately eight to 10 weeks this time of year. This goat does not cause me any stress or problems and I have no objection to this." And it's signed by John Van Brederoe, 93 Chadwell Road, Kate Mun Warner, 78 Fox Hall Drive Road, Jason Warner, 78 Fox Hall Drive, Jim Nipper, 130 Wyndham Road, Ira Billette, 115 Tottenham Road, Glenn Croate, 112 Chadwell Road, Heather Horstier, 29 Chadwell Road, Nick something, 29 Chadwell Road, Rose Marie Ladato, 142 Chadwell Road, Joseph Ladato, 142 Chadwell Road, Andrew Smith, 119 Chadwell Road. And we also have a letter in opposition to the goat from complaint, Donald Shuren and Lawrence Bianchi at 89 Tottenham Road, which I believe is directly behind your place, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so those are all as part of the record as well as your application. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a couple.
Sure.
How much longer is this goat going to be there?
Uh, May till August, just three days a week. I, you know, it's just from May to June, June, July, July till maybe end of July and it's just those three days a week. So out of, yeah, and then that's, that's it. I mean, I would like to have something in place to where next year, if I decide to have that, you know, have the permission so we don't have to go through this again. Because again, it's only a temporary thing. It's not something that, the goat's going to be there for, you know, forever. It's just, just while I bottle-feed it and get it up to my farm, you know.
So basically you need May to August?
May to August, those 15 days a month. So a total of 45 days out of that 90-day span while I'm here working in Rochester.
Next year, roughly the same thing?
If I decide to get one next year, it might, it's not, you know, a definite thing, you know. But if I do, I would like to have something in place so that I, you know, don't have this problem again.
Have you had them in years past?
Yeah, we had a goat last year and actually have one of the neighbors and their daughter, she comes over to see the goat. We had one last year and same thing. Everyone, you know, all their kids came over, played with the goat and they thought it was great. I mean, you know, doesn't bite, doesn't bark.
Is this the second time or?
Yeah, this is the second, the second year, yeah. It's a small goat, I mean, it's literally, we get it at maybe 15 pounds. You know, and, and when they go up to my place, they're maybe 40, 45 pounds tops. I mean, they're dairy goats. I mean, they get big, full grown, but they don't stay here long enough. They just stay here long enough to be 16 weeks, 12 to 16 weeks. And I, I base, you know, my decision when I think the goat's ready to be on its own and then it goes up there and that's it.
Where's your place up there?
Uh, I have a house, I just, I'm building a house on Lake of the Woods, Redwood, New York, Jefferson County.
You go right where that is?
It's a, it's a six-acre lot, 200 feet of waterfrontage.
You go right where that is, very?
Yeah, it's, I, I, the house isn't huge, it's about 1,808 square feet. But I just, I built it out of pocket. This past year, I built the whole house myself. So, so spent all my money on it.
Are you planning on moving up there when the house is done?
No, again, I, I've been in business here in Rochester since 2006. I, you know, I have, you know, I've overbooked this time of year so that, nothing is going to change, you know, my bread and butter is here, you know.
So this could be a continuing thing then, is the fact that you have a house up there?
Yeah, if I decide I, I want to expand, you know, I mean, I, you never know. But I just want to have something in place to where, you know, if.
So the goat from last year is up there now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. I mean, they're great pets, they go out with me in my boat, they go swimming with me, they hang out on my dock with me, I mean, they're, they're great pets. You know, goat milk is, is the most consumed milk in the world. You know, granted, a lot of those countries are third-world countries, but it's still more people drink goat milk than cow milk. They're good pets, they, you know, they, they're very friendly, you know, and this isn't a permanent thing, so.
How noisy are they?
Not noisy at all, because the only time that they, they make noise is when you leave them unattended. So we have it, so, you know, my, my mother's retired, so she's home during the day. So when she's home, she's out in the backyard, you know, doing, you know, the computer or whatever with a goat and then when the goat's with me, it's, it's up with the other goats. So, and then when I'm home from work, then I'm out with a goat, we take turns. So the goat's never unattended and even if it does make any noise, it's not nearly as loud as a dog barking and it's not a, you know, a constant noise.
And the goat's on a leash in the yard?
Absolutely.
Has it ever gotten away or?
No, no. It's a small goat, I, they can't, it's not going to. No, no. It's a small goat, hi- they can't, it's not gonna bust a leash.
Couple of things I'd can enter into this for a special use permit, uh, I think a key word is temporary.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think the other one is, um, normally when we approve a special use permit, there are some conditions that go with it. Like, we have chickens that are checked out once a year by a vet and that type of thing.
Yeah, I have a vet I regularly work with, and I'd be happy to provide any type of paperwork. I actually just had her, uh, over the week before last to give, uh, rabies shots, uh, CDT, which is a petting shot, um, and all, all the other shots. And wormed, regularly wormed. So, uh, uh, all the shots are up to date on all my goats, but I do have a copy of that. I don't have it with me, but I'd be happy to fax it over in the morning, because she, she was just over last week to give the rabies shots. So, they're all up to date on all their shots, yeah.
I think that's good. I think that protects the neighborhood a little bit.
Yeah, sure.
There's some reassurances there.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have to sing to it?
No, no.
Would, would you be willing to build a proper, um, enclosure for the goat other than just the fence?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that I, I think that would probably aggravate my neighbors more, seeing something in the backyard like that. I think the way we have it right now, having a kennel inside of the house, the goat inside a kennel, uh, when it's not on a leash in the backyard with either myself or my mother, I think is the way to go. I think if we build a shed in the backyard, that might be kind of an eyesore to, to people. I don't, I don't know that they'd wanna look at that. Uh, you know, I think if anything, maybe add on some more fence, continue with the fence that we have. There's two sections, or one neighbor has, you know, one section of fence, and then across the back, where the, the neighbors that have complained, they have a fence. I can continue on with that if you, if, if that's what it, you know, it means, you know, to, to not have an issue, um.
Who, who cares for your goats when you're not in Jefferson County?
I hire somebody that works for me up there. He comes on a daily basis up there, just to give them grain, hay, and water. Um, you know, that's, that's the way I do it, I mean.
So, the difference is the bottle feeding has to be done more frequently?
Yeah, and the first, the first four to six months, uh, four months is, is fine, but usually around twelve to sixteen weeks, you take the goat off the milk, and then it's good, because then at that point, it's eating hay, it's eating grain. And, you know, it can live on its own, you know, and, and, and the reason, you know, when you have goats as pets, you bottle feed them, because then they're like a dog. They stay by your side, they're friendly, and, you know, they're, they're pets. You know, they're my pets, you know, um.
How many do you have up there?
Uh, I've got three right now. I had them as a kid. We lived in Webster, uh, and we, I had them as a kid, and then, uh, I got back, now that, I had another house I built a few years back up, up in the same area up there. I, I sold it last year, uh, I, I held the mortgage for the new buyer, and, um, I decided to get back into the goats at, at that house. Um, and then I ended up buying the waterfront property and decided, you know what, I, I have the acreage now, uh, why not bring them down here? So, I, I have, you know, a real nice setup, a six-foot, you know, chain link fence, and it's cost me thousands to put it in. Um, so, I, I have a good setup there for them, and, I mean.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Hello, I'm Helene Seraphine, and I own the home. This is my son Nathan. And I just wanted to add one other thing that Nathan didn't mention. Um, I, I do work part-time, very minimal part-time, for Heritage Christian Services. And even though the Ruthie, the goat, is not registered as a therapy animal, I do take her to work, to see the people. I take her to the group homes, and it's kind of a little, you know, they, they look forward to it. Last two years, they, they love it. Last year and this year, they love it. So, I don't know if that would, you know, be beneficial to know, but also an opportunity for us to do better.
There was someone else who indicated you wanted to speak in favor of the application?
Hi, I'm Trisha Van Brederode, uh, live at ninety-three Chadwell, diagonally across from their property. And I wouldn't even know there was a goat there, except my granddaughter saw the goat, and of course, wanted to go see it. Absolutely no noise, no mass, no nothing, um, just, you know, it's, it doesn't impact us at all. So, I just wanted to add that. They're very responsible, and when it is out, it's always on a leash, and everything's very safe.
I'm sorry, I missed your address?
Ninety-three Chadwell.
Ninety-three.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about goats? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, move on to our next case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight zero seven dash three. Upon the matter of request by Design One Architecture and Planning, acting as agent for Brian Dentroff, for area variances to construct a new detached garage exceeding maximum permitted height, square footage, garage frontage, and garage footprint, and with less than required side and rear setbacks on premises three eighty-six Winfield Road and in R two residential district.
Good evening, my name is David Matthews, Design One Architecture and Planning, two ten Mount Vernon in Rochester. Uh, the owner, Brian Dentroff, is here as well, so we'd like to, uh, co-present if that would be okay?
That's fine. You both raise your right hands. You swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, okay. Okay, so, um, the proposal before you is to, um, create a thirty by forty-foot garage in the location of, uh, partial location of the existing garage, which is, uh, um, roughly twenty feet by eighteen feet. And the size of the garage brought up, uh, three variance issues. The first one was, um, uh, going over the maximum size of squ- of nine hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet. The second issue was the garage footprint is larger than the existing house footprint, which the existing house is seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. And the third issue that size brought up was the maximum garage frontage, uh, going from the thirty feet maximum to forty feet maximum. The second, um, grouping issue was the, um, the height. Um, proposed height of the midpoint of the roof is sixteen foot six inches above the maximum of twelve foot. Um, the existing garage is at a height of eighteen foot six inches. And the third issue was, um, the setbacks. Now, um, Mr. Dentroff wanted to, um, propose this as technically in addition to the existing garage, keep the existing setbacks of two point four feet in the rear and three point two feet on the east side. So, those are the, um, uh, five variance requests for this proposal. Uh, as a note in the, in the, um, uh, letter that was written, the existing lot coverage is ten point two percent, and the proposed, uh, thirty by forty-foot garage would be at a seventeen point two five percent, which is under the twenty-five percent maximum lot coverage. So, now I'll hand it over to Mr. Dentroff.
Hello, um, I have signatures from my neighbors stating that they're okay with what I plan on doing to the garage. The main reason why I need the garage is I own a race car, a show car. My wife wants to get into racing, so that's gonna be two race cars and a show car, and I can't leave them in the driveway. As of right now, I've got five vehicles going on six total. Trying to keep my race car running in the driveway drives my neighbors nuts. I'm trying to keep everything in the garage out of everybody's sight, and with the garage that I have right now, I just cannot do that.
If I, uh, I'm looking at the, uh, survey map correctly, the existing garage that you have is twenty by twenty, so roughly four hundred square feet.
Correct.
So, my question to you would be, why doesn't nine hundred square feet work?
What's that?
Why doesn't nine hundred square feet work, which is what the limit is in the town on garages?
I could make it work if I had to. But I'd really, well, because I'll be working on my vehicles, and with having three, four cars in a garage, I need, you gotta have kinda room around them to work on them. And as of right now, my race car is in my neighbor's garage, and my show car is in Henrietta under storage.
All right, and from, I, from your letter, you're aware that one of the criteria that we have to take into account is whether there's a, an alternative available that wouldn't require a variance?
Correct.
So, when you say, "I can make it work with nine hundred square feet."
Yes, I could make it work for nine hundred.
Saying the other three hundred square feet is because you'd like it, and it would make it easier for you, but you can accomplish what you need to accomplish with nine hundred.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you need this?
And if you were limited to nine hundred, where would the nine hundred be?
As in?
Well, you're proposing forty feet across and thirty feet deep, right?
Correct, it'll be thirty by thirty probably.
All right. And the rear and side variances, you're looking just to be consistent with what's there now?
Correct.
And how long has that been there, do you know?
Probably since they built the building or built the house in forty-nine, I'm guessing.
Do we know when the first zoning ordinance was passed?
I can go look it up. I, I believe, I don't wanna hazard a guess. I'm, I don't wanna guess and be wrong on.
When he's thirty, forty, fifty?
I think it goes back to the, I think to the forties, but I'm not a thousand percent sure.
I was just wondering, so it's, it's possible this was before the zoning ordinance was even.
Potentially, or it might have been built at a time where the standard was different.
Yeah, okay. But you're not looking to go any closer?
No.
And you're, you're gonna use part of what's already there in terms of the foundational stuff?
Yes.
Excuse me, chairman, um, I think as a matter of, um, and I'd have to check to make sure, but I think in a previous iteration of the code, the setback, uh, minimum setback for, um, garages may have been three feet. So, I have to, I can double check.
And of course, that's back when they were using, uh, tape maps instead of instrument surveys.
Correct, and also building with asbestos and other things that we don't allow anymore.
Clear where the boundary lines were for.
Yeah, that's what my house was, had asbestos sighting on it.
Yeah, mhm, okay.
Just out of curiosity, uh, uh, if we were to go by the, the minimum setbacks, and you just brought the building up a foot or so, and, or a foot six, and then brought it over a foot, you would, you would need the setbacks for those two, uh, variances, right? I mean, is there a reason you wanna stay right on that footprint?
Well, for the money issue. I was gonna leave those two walls because.
Okay, all right, that makes sense, all right.
There we there, I don't have to re-dig new footers, new concrete, things like that.
You answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I've got a question for staff. Um, did you guys look with the expansion of the driveway? Did you look at the total coverage, uh, lot coverage?
So, uh, driveway doesn't count toward lot coverage, it's buildings and attachments, so that's not part of, we don't do impervious cover. We do structures. That's how the, the calculation is measured.
I have one question, sir. What are you gonna do with the shed that you have back there? Are you gonna keep that shed?
If we do the nine hundred square feet, I'd have to. I'll just move it over.
It looks to me like the, uh, the footprint of the garage exceeds that of the main house. Am I looking at that wrong, or is that, and that's not supposed to be, right? Is that, is that part of the variance request to allow the garage to be bigger than the house?
That is one of the variance requests, yes.
And that's mostly because you have a house that's smaller than most.
Yeah, well, it's a three-story house.
It's three stories?
Yeah.
I didn't notice the third story necessarily when I was there yesterday.
Well, the basement's full finished.
Oh, the basement?
Yes.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I don't remember three stories, but counting the basement, first floor, and second floor, okay, now it makes sense. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about garages? Yes, sir.
Can I just get a point of clarification? So, there's, there's five variances being, uh, requested. Um, but there is, um, some leeway on to some possibilities of a downsizing if, um, if all five are not granted. So, how would the board handle, um, do we have to make a change now? Or can we request, uh, as many as possible, or can I just get a?
No, what we, what we do is we, when we deliberate on this application, we'll break it into five separate votes. And we'll make a determination with respect to each variance. So, we'll take it, uh, the first would be the front, or the rear setback, then we deal with the side setback, then we'll deal with the height. If the garage is reduced to nine hundred square feet, which is allowed under the code, does that change the height?
Uh, no, your honor.
No, okay. Uh, so, we deal with the height variance next, then the garage square footage, and then the garage footprint variance.
Okay, thank you.
I count six variances. Uh, rear and side setback, height.
Six.
Oh, garage frontage, yes, I'd forgotten that, and the square footage and the footprint, yes, six. So, we'll do six votes.
Excuse me, chairman, one, one thing just to, from a, a management standpoint, instead of doing six separate, you might wanna consider lumping together the ones everybody feels comfortable with approving, and then deliberate on the other items, and advance a motion that addresses the remaining items, just from a, a paperwork standpoint and for the record.
We'll try and consolidate.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This being height, is there, is there not a second story to this, uh, garage?
There's a second story on my garage right now. But, no, I just need a taller ceiling for a motor crane, because every year I pull my motors out of the car. And with the shop crane, it's a lot easier to do that with. So, I need the height in order to get the motors out of the car.
Okay.
Right now, I'm doing it in the middle of my driveway.
Are you gonna put a lift in there also?
No.
All right, I think I had asked about in favor or opposed, and talking about garages, so we'll close the hearing with respect to this case.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
Is case number ZB one eight zero seven dash four. Upon the matter of request by Dennis Robillard for an area variance to install front yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted linear footage on premises fifty-five Glen Ridge Lane in an R one residential district.
My name is Dennis Robillard, I live at fifty-five Glen Ridge Lane.
Please write and you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I don't have a lot to say. Uh, my family just moved to Iona Court about a month and a half ago. Um, we're very excited. We've fallen in love with the house, the town, the community very quickly. Um, and we're just looking to provide a safe space for my now fourteen-month-old son to play. Um, as you can see in the letter, we have a pretty good-sized lot, um, but it, um, most of the playable area, like flat grassy area, is to the side of the house. Um, and that area is actually in front of the foundation line of the house, our backyard. Our backyard, to the extent there is one, um, goes straight down into, um, the Bay Park West. Um, very nice to look at, incredibly hazardous and dangerous for a fourteen-month-old. Um, and so as soon as we realized that we needed to have the variance and everything, we immediately started reaching out to our neighbors, um, and helping them understand what we were trying to do, why we were trying to do it, and we were able to actually get, um, more signatures and letters of, uh, you know, signing the petition of support than we needed to. Um, we talked to them about, um, what kind of fence they thought would be appropriate for the area, and we chose a fence style that fits in with what other people already have in the neighborhood, um, in their front yards. Um, and then the last thing I'll just kind of say is that, um, I know there was some, when my wife turned in the application, there was additional questions about who we're gonna put it in. Um, I'm gonna put it in, um, I did fencing, that was how I paid my way through college. Um, so I feel very comfortable doing, uh, pretty straightforward posts and rail fence, um, on level, flat ground. I don't know if you want me to turn this in, because it's just the additional signatures.
So I got a question about this, um. I'm seeing on the, uh, plan, a yellow line, which is supposed to be the new fence, right? And that's three and a half feet high?
Yep.
And then I'm seeing a red one. I'm not sure what that is.
So that is an existing fence that's there now. Um, it is, it, uh, if you actually look at it, it ends right at the front line of the foundation for the house that was there by, put in there by the previous owner. Um, it's just a picket fence, um, it's in pretty tough shape. Um, but we're just gonna kind of restore that, basically just, uh, the posts are all in good shape, but you need to break up the concrete and just reset them basically, um, so we're gonna leave that as it is for right now, um, and then just extend our fence off of that.
Okay, because I was, when I was looking at this yesterday, I saw the picket fence that's existing, and I agree, it's in, it's in rough shape. I wasn't sure, because this says picket fence along here too, if that.
Can I just step up to you, I don't have a way in front of me. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Uh.
So this is the fence.
Oh, sorry, I, my wife turned, so my wife turned in the application, so this is the red line.
Excuse me, sir, I just need you to speak into the microphone, thank you.
Um, when she consulted with the staff member at the town office, she said because that specific section of fence was behind the foundation line, we didn't need to request a variance for that sort of part of the fence. Because that was not in the front yard, I think.
Yes, the area that's in the orange on the plan is actually not subject to a variance, it's only the line that extends along the front of the property, that's been highlighted in yellow, that exceeds, it matches the fence type, it's the proper fence type, it just exceeds the maximum linear footage that's allowed in order for them to connect it from the home to the existing fence at the edge of their property. So that for.
They don't need that.
The, the variance is not needed for the existing fence, or even the repair of the existing fence. Um, it's only needed for the, the picket, or excuse me, the split rail that they're looking to put in, and only because it exceeds the, the maximum linear footage. So if, if it was thirty-two feet to cover the gap, we wouldn't be here tonight. Because the, the fence style is appropriate.
Okay, thanks, okay.
Split rail appropriate, but putting in the green?
We, we allow the green meshing and, as a treatment for the split rail, it's generally speaking, the rule or the guidance for front, um, yard fencing is that it be open in nature, so the, the mesh doesn't just, just disrupt or block the view through the fence, and so that's why we consider it to be in compliance with the code regulation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone in, who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fencing? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to the next application.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight zero seven dash five. Upon the matter of request by Anton Townsend for an area variance to install a six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises four forty Cooper Road in an R-one residential district.
Anton Townsend, four forty Cooper Road?
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yep, so it's just to have a, um, I was planning on installing a six-foot fence around, well, I guess what I would call the backyard of the home, it's really the side of the home, but the way it's used as the backyard. Um, so I guess it's, the max is supposed to be four feet on the south, southwest corner of the house. Can only be four feet high, but I'm requesting six just for privacy, because Cooper Road, how busy it is with the middle school, high school on the street, a lot of people jog on that street, just a real busy street.
You're like right across from the fire department.
Yeah, I'm right across from the fire department too, so just privacy.
So if I'm looking at this application correctly, the yellow, which is closer to Cooper.
Right.
Right, but right directly behind your house is where you want it six-foot.
Right.
The green? That's not gonna be.
That's where it's okay to be six-feet.
So the green area on the map that you have in front of you is where the six-foot is in compliance with the regulations in our code, based on the definition of a corner lot and yards in a corner lot. The area that's the yellow color is also part of what feels like this particular property's backyard, because it's behind the front entrance of the house. But because it's a corner lot, the legally defined front is actually Cooper Road. Um, and so that portion, that corner, is technically what we would call the side yard, which only allows the four-feet height. So in order for, for the applicant to have a continuous fence at the same height, he needs the variance for this one por- portion.
Wouldn't that be? That was considered a side yard, right?
We look at the first indentation of the, the building, the principal building, so if you look at the, um, the, what, the front, what's at the front of the house, that's where it first indents in, and so that's typically where, or it's possible that they're using, um, the start of a rear yard to the adjacent property. Can be used to start, determine where your rear yard legally begins.
That's why, I didn't understand why you've got yellow halfway down through this backyard and then green.
Because the legal definition is where the rear yard starts at the, at a foundation line, and it can be yours, or it can be your neighbor's.
I never knew that.
This is why we have these meetings.
Alright.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
I have a signature from the neighbor.
Oh, alright, I, for a minute I thought you're.
Oh, no, no, no.
In the application. That would. Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences and rear lines and corner lots, or anything like that? Seeing none, we will close the hearing with respect to this matter. I'll read the.
Read the letter in.
The letter in in a moment. Change the limit on three and a half foot to four foot. We have a letter of consent from Mr. Timby at fifteen Montclair Drive, who has no objection to the location of the property.
Is that the gentleman that lives right next door to your garage, right?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Alright, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight zero seven dash six. Upon the matter of request by Amelia Gonzalez Rodriguez for area variances to install six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height, install six-foot-high rear yard fencing with less than required setback, and to maintain an existing accessory structure with less than required front setback on a corner lot on premises nine Ranch Drive in an R-two residential district.
Good evening. My name is Amalia Gonzalez Rodriguez. I am the owner of the property nine Ranch Drive. So my primary language is Spanish, so let me speak slow.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So I buy the house, um, November two thousand sixteen. So around the May, I think it was May, I had a storm. So the storm damaged my roof. It damaged part of the fence. So I went to the town because some of the friends tell me, anything what you want to change, I am from Cuba, you need to go to the town, different law. I lived in this country only six years. So I went to the, uh, the town, all of this girl know me. I come in every week. So I'm telling me, okay, you need to make the, um, make the permit for the fence. Then, um, it damaged the pool, right? So I had the permit for the pool too. So when Donna see the, the, um, the map from the house, it told me, look, something wrong here. I said, what? He said, the fence where the people lived before, um, made the fence in the same places in this, in the, in the lane, in the property lane. And the people supposed to put the fence three feet back. So I tell her, what is that, I don't understand. So she told me, um, you need to get another, uh, meeting, this is the meeting, for, uh, people agree, because I only want replay the fence for the vinyl, for the color white. So in the same places, right? So he told me, I use the post, the, the, the wood post, so the plastic coming inside the wood, because I don't want to open the hole, only replace one for another. So she told me, okay, you can replace, but in, uh, until one place, she told me, you see in the picture? After that, don't do nothing, you need to wait for this meeting. Alright, so she give me, um, the town give me the, for the, for the pool, give me all the paper, right? When I come back again, tell me, wait, I find another problem, I say, what is another problem? Say, the people move the.
Gazebo.
Gazebo. To more from, I say, oh, I never do that this, I, when I buy the house, I buy the house with that. The people move the gazebo because the people want to install in the hot tub. So, so I tell her, what's the problem, you need to put back the gazebo in the place you, um, there, when another, she told me where, but you need to get another permit. So after all this problem, it was like in August, September. So the winter start, start, so I left everything. I waited this year, and this year last two months, another storm, it broke in the fence where I put the fence, the color white, I only get permit for this, for the place, until you see in the picture, the rest I keep it because I waited for here. Everything fall, so now my house, no, get no fence, nothing. So I decide, I hope, I decide I have the permit or, 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 or let me know what really, I want to do everything legal. Uh, what I correct I need to do, when I went the last time, she helped me the last time, she told me, okay, so I tell the, the one guy, well, my friend, okay, let me move the gazebo. So the guy tell me, okay, you need, I don't know, he tried to move, he tell me, okay, so forget this variance, because I moved the gazebo to the, to the, where the place was the hot tub.
So you're gonna, the, the applicant has indicated to me prior to the meeting that she is gonna relocate the gazebo to its original spot on, in one of the pictures you'll see, uh, um.
Concrete.
A concrete pad, that's where the gazebo was formerly located. And in that location, um, the, so that, they're gonna, she was gonna move it back to that spot.
That's where the surveyor has it labeled as hot tub.
Correct, so it would go back to that location. And I believe that if memory serves, there may have been already approval for it to be in that location, which is, would make it conforming.
But the question that I have.
Yep.
It says maintain gazebo forward of front foundation of house. But isn't the front of the house?
Nope.
Angeles Drive?
Yeah, so the.
So she really isn't fro- forward of the front foundation?
Right, um, I don't know if it's too close to the, where, where it sits right now might not meet the setback requirement for accessory structure like this, you need to have, um, for anything but, I believe, a.
Says four point five feet on one side and four point one on the others, isn't it four feet?
It doesn't, it can be out here, but, um, I, and I'll have to, I'll check the code while, before you have to deliberate on this. But I think that accessory structures or freestanding accessory structures, besides not private garages, need to maintain, uh, setback that's equal to, I believe, I'll double check. But it might be the, the setback from the side yard line might not be met at this current location, and that's why it needs it. It's not, um, it's not forward of the front foundation of the house, because the front, the legal front foundation is the Angeles Drive side. Oh, and that's, oh, on a corner lot, you can't have anything forward of either building line on the, on the street, on a street side. So on a corner lot.
Okay.
It's not technically the rear yard, it's not the front yard, but you also can't have an accessory structure that's, that's outside of, um, the front of building line on either of the side streets. And so if you look at the front building line where it measures thirty point two, you'll note that the, that front building line is either equal to or a little bit further out than that concrete pad. So the concrete pad is a compliant location, the current gazebo location is forward of that.
So she's gonna move the.
So the variance for the, keeping the gazebo where it is would actually not be needed anymore, because she's indicated she's gonna be, she's indicating she's gonna move it back, that she doesn't want it in this corner, she actually wants it where it was initially installed.
So she's gonna withdraw her application for variance and just move that to comply with the code?
For the, yeah, that aspect of the variance application is being.
This is what I try, I don't know, I buy the house like that. I don't know how these people move that, I don't know, I, I care to alter my frame and tell me you need to put something like a wood, and then a slide, I don't know as yet. I tried to move, because I don't know how these people move that, I don't know. She tried to check in the paper, why these people move, I don't get permit, but it's okay, this is, this is ten years ago. I don't know, like a, like a fence is ten years ago, so I don't know.
Some people, believe it or not, some people do things without checking with the town.
So I don't want the problem, so. So, oh, uh.
We need, if I can help, uh, we need a variance right now, as it stands, for the, kinda similar to the other fellow who was just up here, for six-foot-high, um, behind the house.
Correct.
It, it, uh, but not going out to the road on the, on the An- Angeles side, right?
Yes.
Right, so.
It'll line up with the.
It'll line up with the back corner of the house, to the back lot line, and then go back it around. Um, is the, uh, tall fence that's over by the driveway, that's too far forward, uh, uh, so there's a, a variance issue there?
Correct.
It needs to be setback three feet.
Or, yes, or this board can let it sit in its current location. You, I should have seen in your packet that this and the other application was also forwarded to DPW for their review. Um, and so that's.
How long do we think that other fence, that fence looks old?
Ten, ten years.
That fence has been there for ten years? And you've had the house for how many years, three?
Oh.
Two.
Two.
Two? So that, that was an existing?
Yes.
Fence, now are you gonna change that to white vinyl in the same location? You wanna make it all white vinyl?
Yes, because with the storm, some piece, you see in the picture, close to the pool, it broken. So I decide, let me change for white in my.
All the way around.
Right, why I start, then Donna tell me, wait, you can't continue this piece because in the proper lane, these people supposed to put this fence three feet back. So I tell her, why, but this is not my fault, I, I buy the house like that.
Right.
She told me, wait, then the winter coming, I wait. Then next year when I go now, discover another problem, the gazebo. So anytime when I go, it's some problem, but I have no more problem. So I want to use the same post, the wood, some more easy for me. What is I need to put three seats back, it's okay, I don't have the problem. I only want finish with this problem because now everything is open, she's my neighbors, you know? So I don't have no privacy, but really, really what I want is in the part of the pool at the, at the back. Um, because in my house, it get, it's more the girls. So what is shower is, um, is low, everybody watch and see. But I have the bushes, it's six feet, but still, because my neighbor don't have only, um, the, the fence is not in my appeals, I don't know.
Excuse me, can I just have you speak into the microphone?
Alright.
Thank you.
So my neighbor, um, he, he is close to me, I know the people is in front. He told me, no problem, no, I don't have no problem. He, any later, he say he can give the letter. So he understand because the girls, and for privacy I want this, and two, I don't want nobody jumping, jumping on them. Because, um, it get only four feet, four feet. So I don't, um, Donna tell me, the wood where you have is you have the bushes in from the six feet. Um, never cut that because this is help you. And then only one piece is only I want to, the four feet, I want to put the six feet. Can you explain the him better? I don't know. What I want in the pool?
You did fine, dear. You did fine, perfect. Okay? Perfect.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Juliito Rizio, I'm at three eleven Ranch for DAV. So my backyard adjoins her backyard. And I have no problem with it. When the prior neighbors, um, put that privacy fence, at first I didn't like it, but then I realized it gave me privacy too. Um, and, but the way it sticks out three feet on the Ranch Drive side of the garage, I thought that that was the way corner lots were done at that time. And I didn't realize, you know, it wasn't right. And that first big windstorm, when, um, her roof pretty much shingled all over the neighborhood. I had one of my big cedar, uh, yeah, pine trees that was a little defective and it did what they call a tear off and it plopped down and it, it, it blocked Ranch Drive completely. The town sent this big truck over to push it onto the side until things settled down. And then they took it away and then the, last summer I had the rest of it taken down and it scared me pretty good. I got a bunch more of those big tall old pine trees. So, so, you know, we're just kinda working to keep things nice and safe and calm. So I have no problem with what she's trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone wanna talk to us about fences and gazebos? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you. Next application on the agenda is?
Yeah. So you'll note that, um, item ZB eighteen oh seven dash seven has actually been postponed to the August sixth meeting. And so I apologize if, uh.
Seventy-two Bay Shore?
Correct.
Okay.
That'll be heard at next month's meeting. But since I have the mic, do you wanna move on to the item for board action? And I can provide an update and overview of what that is? Oh, never, I'll give this one to Michelle.
I think before we get to that, we have.
Something on the.
The Kings Gate South application.
Correct. So items for board action, case number ZB one eight zero six dash six. Upon the matter of request by Robert Palacios for an area variance to construct an additional eight hundred square foot detached garage exceeding maximum permitted square footage on premises one eighty-three Kings Gate South in an R one residential district.
Is that a tabled item?
It was.
Yes, I moved to take this application off the table and restore it to tonight's meeting. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all present. Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. So the matter can now be called, I guess. It's alright. Now we can, yeah.
Okay, case number ZB.
Follow the rules of order that we got refreshed on.
I'm sorry. Case number ZB one eight zero six oh six. Upon the matter of request by Robert Palacios for an area variance to construct an additional eight hundred square foot detached garage exceeding maximum permitted square footage on premises one eighty-three Kings Gate South in an R one residential district.
Palacios? Did I pronounce it correctly? Palacios, I'm sorry, if you'd step up. No problem at all. Um, let me just recap. I believe this was on our agenda in, originally in May.
Yes.
For a larger garage. And we did not approve that. And then the applicant came back at our June meeting for the, the twenty-five by thirty-two, which was smaller than the original.
Correct.
And we had six members present of the board that night. And so we were unable to reach a decision because three members voted for the applicant and three, uh, well, actually, I think the motion was to deny it and three, uh, members of the board voted.
The motion was to adopt, to approve it. And it was tied three to three.
Four and three opposed, alright. And so we suggested that we table it to when we would have a full complement of the board and be able to take action one way or the other.
Correct.
So now we have a full seven member board. So Mr. Palacios, would you like to just take us through it again? Since we now have seven people here, six of us have heard, heard it, but for the benefit of those of us who have somewhat failing memories and for the member who was present, who was not present last time, could you take us through it again?
Um, we, we talked last time, um, I thought it would pass. Um, there was one thing brought up about me going on my neighbor's property. Um, I'm also want to, I brought up last time that on the other side of my house, I am not on anybody's property and I have an actual eleven foot side that actually can bring anything I want to the back of my garage. Um, I'm looking to, I'm asking for twelve feet more to build. Um, I brought it up, um, that I'm not in anybody's way, the neighbors agreed on it, it's not a problem, you can't see it from the street. Um, other than that, I, I don't know what else to.
Looking for the twenty-five by thirty-two?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, and on, on the south side, or the north side of your property, there's nine point six, three feet in the back corner, eleven in the front. And on the south side, there's nine point three five to fifteen point eight nine.
Correct.
Lot lines are not parallel with the sides of the house.
On one side of my house, I have completely plenty of room, not to touch any neighbor's property. I can go to the back of my yard without any, any.
The north side?
Yes, that'll be the north side of my house. I can go through there without touching any neighbor's property. So I have more than enough room to get back there. Um, I am asking just for another twelve foot to build back there.
When you say another twelve feet, that's where you confused me.
Well, it's, it'll be twenty-five by thirty-two, so I can do twenty by twenty-five and I'm asking for another ten feet.
Okay, alright, that's where I was.
Or twelve feet, I'm sorry.
Right, okay. Now I understand.
I'm sorry, how do you propose to access the garage?
Um, I can go in either way of my house, I have eleven, I think it's eleven foot on one right side of my house. If you're looking at my house, which would be the south side of my house, I have eleven foot to get through there.
The map shows eleven foot in the front, but only nine foot in the back.
Yes, nine foot, it's plenty to get through there with a car without touching my neighbor's side. On the north side of my house, sir, I have plenty of room to get through there without touching the next neighbor's house. It's all my side alone, I'm able to get through there without a problem.
You, you, you would have a problem, in my opinion. You've got only nine feet and inches on both sides of the house. So if you were pulling a good sized car back.
Should be eleven feet on the, on the north side.
Eleven feet at the front part of your house, it's nine point six feet at the back corner of your house. So however you cut it for, cause your house is, your house sits on an angle to your lot or your lot is angled to the way your house is built. You still, you're still gonna be driving on other people's property to pull your cars or trailer in and out. Um, the average trailer, um, the average utility trailer is ten feet wide.
Um, I, I disagree on that, sir. It's not ten feet wide average trailer. Um, I have, I have a trailer now, um, I have a boat that I actually put on my left side, I go through, I have a gate there. You can come and look at it. It's plenty of room to get through there without touching any neighbor's house. There's plenty of room. And that's on my.
Well, the one neighbor that was here at the one point.
That's the south side.
Yeah, he did mention.
That's the side I always use.
Drive on his lawn, he was alright with it, but.
Right, but that's the south, that's the south side. Now my north side is completely all mine. I have plenty of room to get through there with a boat trailer, my utility trailer, my car, um, my log splitter, without a problem. And I'm not on anybody's lawn. It's all my property on that side.
Okay, I mean, I, I, you know, it shows on your map, you've got nine, nine feet and inches on, on it. And I don't believe if you're backing a trailer in or pulling a trailer.
Sir, I don't need to back my trailer and I have plenty of room in my backyard that I, I can drive in and make a U-turn in my backyard without a problem. I don't have to back in. I don't have to touch my other neighbor's side at all. I have completely plenty of room on my north side of my house, all mine, no neighbor, no anything. And I can drive straight in and I have plenty of room in my backyard to make a U-turn.
Okay. I mean, again, it's my opinion on it and it kinda, um, shows up on the map and it, you know, I, 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 I.
It could show up on the map, if you come to my house, there's plenty of room, which the side that I used, I put my boat through. I go right through there on my boat all the time.
On the, on the right side where you're driving?
On the north side, I go through without a problem, without touching any neighbor's yards. That's a boat trailer.
Which is wide.
Yes, and it goes right through without touching the neighbor's yard.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at, um, just Googling the size of trailers and, and most of them are, uh, eight foot, you're correct, ten foot by sixty or twelve foot. So I think that, uh, um, that eight foot trailer, what I, what I observed was that he have enough room on, on his side. When I walked the property with him, there was enough room for him to.
Plenty of room.
Okay. Again, I don't, I don't, I can't see it without him going on people's property.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Problem's gonna be is, in the event that some, one of the neighbors, you know, buys or sells a house and he's got it, and they don't want you driving on their lawn.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I didn't walk both sides of the property with him.
I'm not on anybody's lawn, I'm on my own lawn.
I think though that, and, and I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Brennan for a definitive opinion, but I believe that if we were to approve it.
Yes.
And you ended up in the future having a problem with a neighbor on both sides who said you can't.
I, I, sir, I.
No, let me finish. Like, let's say they put down fences on the property line, alright? And if you couldn't get something between, that would be your problem, not our problem.
Right, but the thing.
And as long as you have neighbors who don't have a problem. If it's necessary, then it's not a problem for you either.
No.
But if we approve it, you have to understand that doesn't give you a right, by us approving it, to use your neighbor's property if that's needed. Some people think it is. And some people think it isn't. And, but whether it is or it isn't, is not something correct with, that comes into our play?
I would agree, uh, Mr. Chairman, and these approvals would not create any type of easement. Um, on the other hand, I think it's worth mentioning, it's probably a proper consideration of the board, um, in making this determination as to whether or not the property owner would be able to, to, uh, use, use the garage how, how he's intending to use it. So say that he can't fit it.
Could I say something, sir? Um, there is a fence already there.
On the south side?
On the, on the north side. I'm talking, forget about the south side, I use that because it's convenient.
Alright.
But my north side is all my property and the neighbor's fence is there. And I still get my boat through there without touching any of his land or anything. So I have plenty of room.
Probably put in after, uh, the date of this survey, which is cut off at the bottom. Whenever the survey was done.
There is a fence there now, I don't even touch that fence.
Not arguing with that, what I'm saying is that that fence doesn't show up on your survey. Normally, a fence close to the sideline wood, like the chain link fence that shows up.
Correct.
For the property that's southeast of your house. So the fence must've been put there after the survey was done, that you've attached to the application, that's all I'm saying.
Right, but on the north side, the neighbor does have one.
It's possible that they set that fence back two or three feet from the property line, I mean.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with them being there, I have plenty of room to get through there.
Right.
There's, they're not in my way, on my own actual property.
The only, what I'm saying is that the reason that there could be a difference of opinion between Mr. LaPerry and Mr. Evans is because there may be plenty of room between your house and the fence.
Yes.
But the fence may not be on the property line.
Okay, okay.
And so Mr. LaPerry's looking at the map, which says nine point six three feet, which is nine feet, seven point five six inches. I calculated that, I did not come up with that on my own. And, but if the neighbor, and his belief is that that's not sufficient, but if your neighbor has set your, the fence, say, two feet, now you have eleven feet, seven. So that may be why it appears and why everything seems to be fine. And it may be that the reality is that it's not. But we're not here to decide where your neighbor's fence is and.
Right.
I mean, if we approve it and you don't have the ability to get anything back there, yes, we're stuck with having approved something that may not be usable.
Right, but that.
But you're, you have the bigger problem than we do.
Right, no, there, there won't be no problem, sir. Um, the fence where my north side neighbor has, they already put a fence in there, it's been in there, I've been there probably, uh, eighteen years. The fence has never been in my way.
Okay.
So the fence is, e- even if they're two feet over, it's still not in my way, I have plenty of room to get back.
They're not on your side, they may be on their side.
Yeah, they're probably, they're a foot in on their side.
I'm just trying to offer up what a possible explanation is for reconciling two different opinions from two different, two different members of the board.
Correct.
We're looking at the same thing, how can they be seeing things differently? Well, that's one explanation.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we understand that we can get through there without interfering with anybody.
And with that representation on your part, if we go ahead and approve it, as our council says, it doesn't give you a right to go on a neighbor's property and if it turns out you're wrong.
Of course not.
If it turns out you're wrong, then that's not anything that we can do anything about.
Correct.
That's all we're saying.
Yes, there's plenty of room there for me to get by.
Alright.
One other, couple things, the lean-to parts, are they still coming down then?
Uh, the lean-tos are down. Um, I have a, can I ask a question though? Um, I, I asked for variance for a garage in my backyard with the lot, property size that I have and I. Um, I, I asked for a variance for a garage in my backyard with the pro- lot, property size that I have, and I still went and cut the lean-to's down. More than, like, twenty-five feet on each side, I'm just asking, I came for a variance for a garage, and, and you're asking me about lean-to's. I mean, they're out of the way, I'm here for a variance for a garage.
But I thought there was part of it that you were taking there down originally?
Yes, I did that, I did that originally.
I know what you're talking about, and then there's the other thing, was the shed staying, or is that coming down?
If the shed has to come down, I'll bring it down.
I'm trying to just get everything back to where we were, cause we're original to a new one, and part of the originals talked about the shed coming down and the lean-to's. Then you came in with another application, and I don't know if that stuff was even in there.
Yes, uh, I took down twenty-five feet of each side of my lean-to last meeting, um, if my shed has to come down, if that's what you're asking me. I don't know if it has to interfere with the square footage of the house compared, having the lean-to, I mean, having the shed. If that has to come down, I would bring it down, I don't under- I don't know if it has to come down, but if it does, I will.
That remains to be seen.
Can I ask the staff, and I think I did once before, does a lean-to, um, uh, have a percentage of?
It's, it's not, um, it's not something that's a permitted type of a structure, um, and so, I don't think it counts toward lot coverage.
But you mean it does need a permit when you say it's not permitted?
I, I believe, I'm, thank you for clarifying, yeah, so for people, yes, it is allowed, it is allowed. It's not, uh, an item that needs, that requires a building permit, um, from the town, and so, um, I don't believe that it counts toward the lot coverage. When you're calculating.
I find it odd that it's a structure, and it's not.
It's not a structure, it's not.
Well, it's, it's got posts in the ground.
No, it does not.
So, it's similar to when folks store wood along the side.
This is one time when you're running ahead, so.
Okay.
So, the, it would be like somebody building a frame to hold their firewood, um, that is a structure that's made of wood, but we don't permit those. So, it, it doesn't rise to the level of needing, um, needing to meet New York State Building Code.
Okay.
Uh, my lean-to, I, I brought it back twenty-five feet.
What the staff is saying is that the lean-to's not an issue.
Okay.
Alright, and when we brought, when it came up in May, I think it was.
Yes, sir.
It was brought up by, in terms of how much stuff there was in the backyard.
Correct.
And now adding a garage, that's how it came up.
Yes.
Alright, it wasn't that you needed a variance, and it wasn't anything, it was a discussion about if we're going to approve very large structure in there, too, we would want those lean-to's cut down.
Correct.
Cut them down.
Yes, I did.
And you cut down the size of your application.
Yes.
So, the only question that remains in May, with the larger thing, we had discussed whether or not, as a condition of granting a variance, we would require the removal of the shed. So, we haven't addressed that consideration yet. So, if you go with the twenty-five by thirty-two-foot garage.
Yes.
Why do you still need the shed?
If the sh- if it's, if it needs to be knocked down, sir, if that's what you guys are asking me to do, then that's what I would do. If it doesn't need to be knocked down, then I, I won't actually do it, I can.
It came up, uh, in discussion about how much stuff there is in your backyard, and how big a building, if any, we would allow you to put back there, that's how it came up. So, what you're saying is if we think the shed is too much, that's okay with you, if we give you your garage, you'll take away your shed.
Yes.
Right, okay, alright, I just wanted to be sure that I was clear about where we all stood.
Yes, sir.
I think I am now.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the garage is in relation to the lean-to, because the lean-to's not showing on the.
Lean-to's run along the property line.
Yeah, I see, I see the lean-to there, but.
The lean-to's run on the outside of my property line, sir, all the way around.
How wide is that lean-to?
It, it goes out to the, to the.
Not length, wide, width.
Oh, it's only like four feet wide one way, and four feet wide the other.
Alright, and the garage?
The garage is going in the right corner, so if you're looking at my house.
It'll be in front of part of the lean-to?
It's gonna be behind the lean-to.
So, you're gonna have to cut down a bunch of trees?
No, 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 I'm, I'm in, I'm in front of the trees.
If the garage goes in front of the lean-to, it goes behind the lean-to, those trees have to be.
The lean-to's are gone, sir.
Oh, okay.
There's.
According to the picture I'm looking at, from two thousand eighteen, the trees are there.
The lean-to has been taken down, twenty-five feet on each side, so I can put my garage.
Shorten it up, then?
Yes, I took it way down, so that where there's room in the corner, it's gonna go way in the back in the corner. Um, it's definitely out of the way of everything. There, there are no lean-to's back there right now.
Mr. Upson's been out for two months with some health issues.
Yes, I understand.
If this is a lean-to now.
That's why he has more questions than.
That's okay, I'll answer them for him, I just, just want him to, well, I just want him to understand, too.
Back in those trees.
Yeah, Mr. Upson, I think the trees are in the, uh, neighbor's yard, that you're looking at.
The trees are on the other end of the property, that, that belongs to the people behind me, the trees have nothing to do with. Yes, the trees have nothing to do with me.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
So, do you have a question on the lean-to, Mr. Upson?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Alright, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone like to talk to us about garages, lean-to's, fences, firewood, anything like that?
Oh, it, I'm sorry, you closed the public hearing, I believe, at the last meeting, and we did, you, the board tabled the item after closing the hearing? To, um, to continue, because the vote, remember you had taken up the vote?
I'm, I'm a, I'm a big fan of public hearings, though, and seeing as we have nobody to speak in favor, in opposition, or about anything. We'll have conducted one tonight, that's.
It wasn't advertised as such, though?
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
We can always add, we can't take away, right?
Correct.
Alright, so, we're, we added, we're not taking away, and there's no public input, so we either didn't have a hearing, or we had a hearing that nobody participated in, one way or the other, but we're done. Okay, I'm gonna close your case?
Okay, I'll close my case.
There's no public input to respond to.
Okay.
Alright?
Thank you.
I have a que- Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Oh, but Mr. Thomas has a question.
Yes.
Not for you, not for you, we're, we're cool.
Thank you.
Question is the board, because if Mr. Upson was missing last month.
We had our substitute, Mr. Tim.
I was missing.
Was here, we had six.
Okay, oh, so you did have six, I thought you only had five.
Oh, we had six, Mr. Scott was here.
He voted for it, Mr. Scott voted for it.
We had six, three in favor, three opposed, and now we have you here and Mr. Upson with us tonight, it's complicated math, but.
Throwing me for a loop for a minute, yeah, okay, got it.
Like, there's eight, we had, usually have seven, we had six, but the six weren't the same as the eight. It's something like that. It's late, alright, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter. The last item for board action is a initiation of a coordinated review for seeker purposes for redevelopment of a project proposed at twenty-two fifty-six Hudson Avenue. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is on for us to, we've been provided with a copy of a, of a request from Marathon Engineering. On behalf of Eastland Savings and Loan that wants to put a branch there, and the issue for us tonight is whether we will allow the planning board to be designated as the lead agency, correct?
Correct, so this board should decide whether or not it wants to take up the lead agency, or if they would rather defer it, and re- refer that, uh, task to be taken by either the planning board, which will be reviewing the site plan. Or the town board, which will have a special use permit, uh, to issue, however, given the scope of the project, generally the planning board would serve as the lead agency for this ti- kind of an action.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, refer this, the seeker aspect of this application to the planning board or the town board, for them to serve as the lead agency with respect there, too.
Would you mind amending that to just the planning board, so there's no confusion, I do apologize.
Or if the planning board defer, declines, the town board, then we don't have to vote again?
Corr- um, correct, I think that, um, in terms of the order of operation, the planning board will be the next one to have application, so they'll be the next one able to take action.
Okay.
But this is a just starting the coordinator review process, so we need something to start the process so that a lead agency at the, um.
No, I understand, I, I was just thinking, though, that if, if the planning board, for some reason, were to say we don't wanna do it.
Right.
That we've already voted for the town board.
Oh, true, okay.
As a backup plan?
Perfect.
Alright.
Well done.
My motion is that we, um.
I'll second it.
Consent to designating the planning board as the lead agency, and in the event that for some reason they're unable to do it, that we consent to the town board serving as the lead agency for seeker purposes for this application, and I think Mr. LePerry seconded that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, the entire board is present, and we will now take a adjournment until nine o'clock. And we will reconvene. I don't see, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see the applicant for 2036 North Goodman Street. I don't see the applicant for 108 Chadwell Road. I don't see the applicant, I do see the applicant for 386 Winfield Road. The applicant for 55 Glen Ridge Lane. 440 Cooper Road. Nine Ranch Drive is here. Bay Shore Boulevard is postponed. One eighty-three King's Gate South is here. And we've taken care of...
E S L.
E S L. Right?
Yep.
Okay. So. Alright, so the first application for consideration is the application with respect to 386 Winfield Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll, I can make a motion on 386 Winfield Road. In reference to the overall square footage, the gentleman did say that he could live with the thirty by thirty. He could make it work. The other part of the, so I, I think we should amend the application to be thirty by thirty, or limit it to thirty by thirty. The side setback and the rear setback of one point six feet and point eight feet, and the height of four point five. I would say okay, okay, and okay. The maximum square footage you will not need. He's looking for forty, but he already said that thirty by thirty would work, so I would say he'd be okay. We would eliminate that variance, or deny that variance. And then, there will be no variance for the twelve hundred square feet, because we're going to keep it to nine hundred square feet. And, the garage footprint of twenty-four by thirty-two, which is allowed, can go to thirty by thirty.
So if I understand your motion correctly, it would be to approve the side and height setbacks, and approve a thirty by thirty foot garage, and allow that to exceed the footprint of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, the height variance.
Permitted, right.
The permitted height variance, right?
Yeah, side and rear setback and the height variance.
Side, rear, height, and thirty by thirty, nine hundred square feet max.
I'll second that. Assuming the other findings are in place.
I was going to say, did you want to go through and make the findings as part of your motion?
Oh, I forgot about that part. I'll say that that is, does not hurt the character of the neighborhood. It is a self-created problem, because he has an older garage and he wants to update it. There are alternatives, which we did make an adjustment as far as the size of the alternative. We went to the maximum square foot allowed. It is not, in my opinion, a substantial request, because he is eliminating a current garage and replacing it with one so, of similar size, just a little bit larger. It will not affect the physical or environmental conditions, granted. And based on that criteria, I say we approve it as specified.
Okay, I still second it.
For purposes of the sheet, I'm putting down that we're granting the variance with a condition being thirty by thirty foot garage size. That covers everything? Instead of having six or eight or three or four votes, however many we were going to end up with?
That's perfect, yes, thank you.
All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The entire board continues to be present.
Ms. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I'm not sure what's important, thirty by thirty is fine, but suppose he wants to go forty by twenty as width important to him, or is that depth agreeable? Forty by twenty still serves the same...
I thought he'd made reference to thirty by thirty.
Thirty by thirty, okay.
During this portion of the meeting, we're allowed to ask questions. Thirty by thirty.
Okay. I'm still an aye.
Aye. Alright, so the next application for us to consider is Nine Ranch Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the variances as requested. The fences have been in place for at least ten years, and they have not brought about any possible change to the character of the neighborhood. They provide privacy for the owner and for the neighboring owner as well. The alternative that would not require a variance would require the fence to be moved back two feet from its current location, and given the relatively small side of, size of that portion of the yard, two feet, moving it back two feet, although it wouldn't require a variance, it would have a, I think, a more substantial impact on the homeowner than granting the variance will have on the neighborhood. It's a two-foot request, which is not substantial. There won't be any effect on the physical or environmental conditions, and it is not a self-created hardship. The fence was destroyed or damaged as part of the windstorm, and it needs to be, at least a portion of it needs to be replaced, and since it all seems to be in less than ideal condition, replacing it with a new vinyl fence would be an improvement to the neighborhood. With respect to the fence height in the side yard, again, this is a corner lot, the portion of the property that she wishes to have the six-foot high fence that the zoning code would not allow, and would permit a four-foot fence is, is used by and seen by just about everybody in the neighborhood as being her backyard, not her side yard, and that's the only portion of her yard that is sufficient to accommodate the pool that she's had there, and a six-foot fence will give her greater privacy with respect to the use of the pool and that portion of her functionally backyard than a four-foot fence, which would provide little to no privacy. It will not have any adverse change to the character of the neighborhood. There is no, the only alternative not requiring a variance is a shorter fence, which doesn't allow the homeowner to accomplish the purpose of the larger fence. It's not a substantial request, given the configuration of the lot. It will have no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and again, it's not a self-created hardship, it's a function of living on a corner lot. With respect to the requested variance for the setback of the gazebo, since she's moving the gazebo to a spot that would be permitted, that is no longer in front of us, so I would move to approve those variances.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Timing of the moving of the gazebo?
I would say we, we're not granting a variance, but would, she's still here, would you be able to move that by, say, October first?
Yes.
Alright, so the gazebo can be moved by October first. I'll put that in as a condition. Alright, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The entire board continues to be present. Next item on this, our, the agenda is one eighty-three King's Ga, one eighty-three King's Gate South. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Not hearing anybody jumping at it, I'll make an, I'll make a motion that we approve the application as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
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 Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the motion carries five votes in favor, two opposed, no abstentions, and we're all present. Is that correct? I think so, okay. Next case on the agenda is, oh, wait a minute, here we go. With respect to 2036 North Goodman Street, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request, the following She's trying to upgrade the fencing, and she doesn't have a whole lot of square footage to work with, so putting it in the line should be not an issue with the neighbor or the character of the neighborhood. Certainly, she shouldn't have to take down trees to comply with a setback, so what I'm moving is that we don't be concerned about that back setback, so the trees would be It was really not self-created, because she kind of inherited it like that. It's a small lot, and she's trying to make the best of it, improving things, and certainly could use a little privacy on that piece of land. That's the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Again, this is one of those lovely fence projects, or projects that goes on in our town where the permit gets asked for after the project's all done. I don't believe it was the owner's fault, I believe she got, she got bad advice from her contractor. But for those who are watching, I just request that you get a permit before you do things.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. LePerry seconded that motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and the entire board continues to be present.
Mr. Chairman, I could, I'd like to interrupt this for a second.
Certainly.
If you could, after we get done deliberating everything, I have an issue that I wanted to at least inquire about at the end of the meeting.
I have two, so yes. The next application to be considered pertains to 108 Chadwell Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application for a special use permit?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this, uh, with the following findings. It's a special use permit, so all those other factors don't enter into it, is correct?
Yes, the, the, um, special use permit affords us the opportunity to, uh, grant the application with, uh, conditions, the conditions that we've, uh, fashioned with respect to, um, chickens and hens in the town, uh, to the extent they would appear to be, uh, applicable here, uh, would be, uh, submission of a veterinary health certificate annually, uh, no food to be stored on the ground, and that the town staff may conduct inspections of the premises on an annual basis without prior notice to the homeowner.
And I think that would be sufficient in this case.
Given the fact that it's a temporary use.
Temporary, yeah.
But perhaps recurring annually is different from the hens where we say no replacements within a five-year period. These would be potentially replaced every year.
I guess my question though, I mean, even the one making the motion here, if he decides that he wants another goat next year, should he come back here or should it be assumed that it's already approved?
Well, I think if we approved him to have a goat every year for the next, I think we've put a five-year limit on the special use permits in the past, we could make it for five years.
Five years, yeah.
No more than one goat every year and only between, um, I think we could say April and September in order to make sure that we're within, depending upon when, I think when he gets the goat depends on when the 14-week period that he's talking about starts.
And that would be to take care of this bottle feeding and?
Right, as once it's, he said that he only keeps them there for 14 to 16 weeks.
Yeah.
While they're being bottled.
Mrs. Chairman, should we put a limit to no adult goats?
Sure, are you getting all these conditions?
Okay, good, because I haven't started writing them yet.
Yes, I, I like that as well, that, you know, no adult goats. Any other conditions that the board thinks would be appropriate? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Alright.
Brad.
Brad? That's alright, any, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. The next item on this tape is the application pertaining to 55 Glen Ridge Lane. Uh, this is also a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application or a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I, I'll make a motion that we, um, grant the request, um, for the area variance for the fence. Um, just by the way that the applicant described his property and by seeing the property, really his, his 14-month-old doesn't really have much of an area to, to, to play and, and is forced to play in the front yard, um, due to the safety conditions or due to the hazards of the backyard. He did speak, um, about the type of fencing with his neighbor, so he was trying to find something that's consistent with the neighborhood. It's not a, um, it is a self-created, um, situation because he did buy the property and he knew when he bought the property that the backdrop was there, but I think, um, you know, for the safety of his child, he's trying to, um, you know, protect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board continues to be present. The next application pertains to 440 Cooper Road. This is also a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion for 440 Cooper Road, um, to approve the fencing, uh, being two feet high instead of four feet high in that, uh, side yard, um.
You mean to be six feet high instead of four?
Yeah, I'm sorry, six feet high instead of. It's a two-foot variance.
Two-foot variance, right.
It's getting late, can you tell? Um, I don't believe it's a substantial, um, variance. Uh, it is a corner lot and they're all, uh, unique circumstances. Their alternatives are to just put a four-foot fence there, but it wouldn't give them the backyard privacy they're looking for. Uh, I do not believe it's a, a change to the neighborhood because it will be tucked up by their house and behind, you know, actually behind their house, it's not like he's bringing it all the way out to Cooper Road. So I don't think it, uh, hurts the character of the neighborhood and I don't think it's gonna hurt the environmental or physical conditions of the, of the neighborhood. Based on all of that, I would approve this application.
Second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. And the board continues to be present. Mr. Thomas, sir?
Okay, uh, my, my question is, as a, as a zoning board, if we wanna change, uh, one of the codes, I think that, uh, we need to propose something to the town board to consider. And what I'm thinking here is that we should, uh, get rid of this three-and-a-half-foot fence requirement and go right to four feet because manufacturers don't make a three-and-a-half-foot fence. They came up in the meeting tonight and, uh, it makes it difficult for homeowners to, to work with that. Unless they have them specially made or something. I think three-and-a-half feet is, uh, sort of kind of obsolete or old-fashioned. If you wanna provide for that possibility, fine, but I think four-foot, four-foot fence should become the standard minimum allowable fence.
I, uh, that was one of the two things that I wanted to, to raise as well. So actually what I, I think, I don't know if there's any, I suppose, Mr. Brennan will tell me if I'm way off base here, but I would make a motion that the board recommend to the town board that the zoning ordinance be amended to allow for four feet of fencing in a front, front yard, which is consistent with the side yard.
So, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's anything in the code that would provide for, um, a petition by the zoning board to the town board, but anyone in the town can petition the town board for an amendment? And the, and the town board can also amend the code on its own motion? So, you know, if the board wants to, you know, make a recommendation to the town and one of the town board and one of the board members wants to, um, wants to move to amend it, they, they could get the process started that way, I think.
And just so the, this board is aware, town staff, um, who, and we work with the, the code pretty closely all the time in preparation for these meetings and working through the planning board process as well, we've identified a series of potential, um, upgrades, changes, modifications that as opportunity and time presents, that we would be able to make changes to the code. Uh, as you know, a zoning amendment is a, uh, a labor-intensive task, um, and not one that's accomplished for free. And so we, uh, it's certainly something that is, um, we're mindful of here at the staff and we do communicate with the town board about potential opportunities for improvement or enhancement in our code. Um, so that's gonna be.
So in the words of the late Gildar Radner, never mind.
No, 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 it's, I, it's helpful feedback to have and I have, I keep a running list as it's like a standing joke in, in the office, that I keep a standing, a running list of potential changes to the code based on our experience working with it. And the, the three-and-a-half foot is certainly one of them, so if you have another one to share.
So the next item would be the minutes for the, uh, June 4th meeting. And it's been brought to my attention that Mr. Thomas was not present, although he's listed as being present. So with that change, has everyone had, I should, my first thing, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the June 4th meeting? And are there any other changes or corrections that anyone believes should be made to the, to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Those in favor say, oh, you mean a second.
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 Brad, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Upston abstains, right?
No.
No.
You weren't pressed.
No, but I can, I can still vote on him.
I abstain.
Okay, you abstain.
I abstain.
You abstain, okay, yes, so it carries six votes in favor, no, no opposed, one abstention. We are all still present and we are now adjourned.
Good to have everybody back.
Wonderful to have a complete.